Good evening. I'd like to call to get, to order the city council meeting. This is the outgoing agenda of Monday, July 1st, 2019. And we'll start with a prayer from Pastor Sarah Nelson. Please, please rise.
Let us pray. Creator God, be with all of us who gather tonight for this meeting. Lead us and guide us. Help us to hear the wisdom of one another. In the midst of it all, help us stay centered in you. It is in you that we find our strength and our worth. Be with us as we begin this meeting. Give us wisdom and courage, patience and ears to hear, and guide our words and our actions. We root ourselves in your love first and always. May it be so. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Albertson? Absent. Bueller? Danforth?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti? Absent. Roby?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorson? Absent. Vilhauer?
Here.
Why?
Present.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. And I would like to move item nine, which is the council consideration to reject all bids for the 2019 asphalt patch repairs project number 1922 to the consent agenda, since that was thoroughly discussed and recommended at the committee meeting. So is there a motion to approve as modified?
So.
Moved by Bueller, second by Lalum. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number two is public comment. This is a time set aside for people to talk about whatever they'd like. And if you have a specific agenda item that you're interested in speaking about, I would recommend that you wait until we come to that item. Seeing no one, we'll move on. Item three is approval of the agenda. Motion by Vilhauer, second by Bueller. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item four is council consideration of resolution number 19-27 approving the plat of Eastwoods 19th addition, subject to all planning requirements. Look for a motion, second for approval. A motion by Solom?
Second.
Second by Lalum. And we'll start the discussion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, we're not requiring a public hearing, but we'd like to make a motion to open it up for public comment.
Have a motion to open this for public comment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion by Vilhauer, second by Lalum. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries and we will open this for a public comment. And I would like the first comment to come from our city engineer Heath Von I. Would you please explain the project?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor, members of council. Excuse me. The application for you tonight is an application for a plat of, brought to you by the petitioners, Joy Nelson and Peggy Houghan. They have submitted a plat of Eastwoods 19th addition. This is following the preliminary plan, which was acted upon by the Plan Commission on June 20th, 2019. The plat is, the plat of Eastwoods 19th addition will create 10 conforming lots designated as R2, single-family attached residential district. A development agreement, an agreement for the construction and maintenance of the private road, and a stormwater best management practice development agreement are included as supplemental action items after the pending approval of this plat. The Plan Commission recommended approval at the June 20th meeting by a unanimous vote of six to zero for the approval of the plat. I do have a, the plat pulled up on my screen if Ray would wish to pull that up. And that is the plat area that we, you're considering this evening and the 10 lots associated with it. They anticipate developing twin homes on here, on each one of these lots. There'd be a duplex or twin home configuration on each one of these 10 lots. And we'd be glad to help answer any questions that the council or public may have.
Right. Thank you. So the, the council has just had a lesson in parliamentary procedure. And so I hope you'll be patient with us as we try to do things correctly, in line with Robert's Rules of Order. And in doing that, I would like to invite the public to come forward. I'm going to ask for those in favor of approving the plat to come, and then those against can come. We'll alternate back and forth. And I'll actually give another time for those just asking a question or making a comment, not pro or con, so that we have dispersment throughout the conversation of those in favor or against approval of the plat. So I will start out by inviting anyone who is here in favor that would like to speak in favor of approving the plat to come forward. Is there anyone in favor that would like to speak? Seeing none, is there anyone against that would like to come forward and speak? Seeing none, or, oh, we have one. Okay, please state your name for the record.
One, two? Okay. Mike Tanner, 1279 Cherry Drive Northeast in Watertown. And I can't say that I'm either for or against the plat, I guess, because, well, I'm not anti-development and I'm not against what's being proposed here. I spoke at length about this at the Planning Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. My concern is a longstanding issue that we've had in our neighborhood as it relates to drainage. And I invited Don and Glenn and Reed Holene out to see it firsthand last week. This is a problem that dates back to when Tom Drake was the city engineer. We have a drainage ditch, a channel. I'm not sure what the correct wording would be. That's kind of where the cursor is there. There's seven tenths of a foot of elevation change along there, so virtually none. There are tall reeds and cattails growing in there. Garbage collects in there. It's always wet. It looks bad. In the summertime, it gets sludgy and mossy and green in there. It looks bad. It's never mowed. I've lived in my home for a little over four years and that stretch has never been mowed because it's just, it's too wet and it's, it just grows out of control. And so this plat that you're looking at tonight, it was initially, I believe, R4 zoning for large apartment buildings back in 2015. And we fought that because it was just a bad fit for the neighborhood. And everybody that I've talked to is not opposed to this plat or this plan. I think Joy will build nice homes back there. And I think it will be a good fit for our neighborhood. So we're not anti-development. We're here again tonight to talk about a longstanding drainage problem. All of the water from this plat, it's going to flow south. That's how the, the, the land is graded toward this channel or this ditch that doesn't drain. And we just have concerns over how it's going to affect our backyards, our neighborhoods. My shed this spring, when everything, the snow and everything melted off, my shed in my backyard was a lake. I didn't get water in my house, but I had water at least probably ankle deeper more in my entire backyard. And my sump pump was running all the time. And all of our sump pumps run all the time. They never stop. And I guess the reason that I'm here talking again tonight is because we've been working on trying to get a solution to this drainage problem since 2015. And I asked myself, okay, we haven't gotten a solution over that time, but how many building permits for that neighborhood have been approved during the same timeframe? A lot. Twin homes, single-family homes, apartment buildings. The more you build, the more it's going to drain off. And we've got a culvert that runs under Cherry Drive. And I'll read from an email that the mayor sent out yesterday to some folks, including me. And I'll read directly from the email. She says, "The culvert, the one that runs under Cherry Drive into that channel." Do I have a cursor here where I can? Okay, this channel right here? Yep, that one right there. Right where Cherry Drive takes that curve toward the east there, a culvert runs underneath there. All of the water from the east drains to that channel. And the channel does not drain. I looked at the culvert today. We had about two inches of rain in Watertown, so the culvert is full of standing water. Culverts are designed to move water, to get it flowing. And every time I look in that culvert, there's water that's just standing there. And Sarah wrote in her email that the culvert being too low is a mystery. Rod DeYoung told me years ago that it was accidentally installed too low, which resulted in over excavation of the channel downstream to make it flow. So this is a man-made problem here. I know Heath talks about the history of, of drainage in this area dating back to aerial photos from the early 2000s where everything drains from, from east to west. And I get that. But the problem we're dealing with, when you've got a culvert that was installed too low, which resulted in over excavation of the channel downstream to make it flow, that's a man-made problem. And it's a problem that we have been imploring City Hall to fix for almost five years. And we can't get anything done. Sarah, when you ran for mayor, you had a meeting at the picnic shelter at Eastwoods Park. And you told us that you recognized this was a problem and it was going to be fixed. And here we are, five years later, and nothing has been done. We've been told over and over again, it's going to be fixed. I've got a letter here from Shane Waterman dated October 5th, 2015. "The city has appropriated funding for the drainage project in the 2016 budget. Unfortunately, this means construction will not start until next summer, 2017." That came and went. 18 came and went. Here we are, 19. Nothing's been done. "The city is working with an engineering consultant on the pipe slash tile design." Now, when I read that, pipe and tile, I thought, good, they're going to do something to move the water and solve this problem with pipe and tile. Well, then I go back to Sarah's email from yesterday. And she says, "I'm in favor of beautifying this channel to make it less objectionable to the neighbors, but I would not recommend implying that we can do more than that." So now we're talking about maybe an aesthetic change, but not fixing the problem. So again, I'm not anti-development. I, I told the Planning Commission, we're not snobby people up there. We'll be good neighbors. And I know Joy will build a nice development that the city and we can be proud of. But you keep building up there without fixing this problem. And at some point, you gotta deal with it, or you're going to have a major mess on your hands. The other thing I will point out is on the plat, can we pull the plat back up again? On the southeast corner, I don't know if I have a cursor here, but on the southeast corner of the development, the proposal, as I understand it, is to pile snow on city property at that location. If that channel problem doesn't get fixed, you could not pick a worse place to pile snow than right there. And I know because I see it out my back window every single day. So I'm not opposed to the plat. We'll be good neighbors and, and I think we're all resigned to the fact that, that this is going to get approved, which is fine. But man, at some point before you keep building over and over and over up there, you've got to address this problem. We've been knocking on your door since 2015. Sarah, when you were the city engineer, we had a meeting upstairs with then-mayor Thorson. Don was there, Mike was there, Austin Engineering was there. Everybody recognized, we got a problem, we're going to work on this and get it fixed. That was almost five years ago. And we keep building and nothing gets done. So, fine, go ahead and approve the plat. But I guess what I would like to know, and I'll, I'll close by saying, I guess I would like to know from the mayor and/or the city engineer what the plan is to fix this, if there is a plan. If it's going to be an actual fix, or if you've given up on an idea of moving the water and you're just going to make it look pretty? And when you plan on doing that? I know Brandy Hampton told me there's $100,000 in the budget to do something this year. She pulled out a list and, and showed it to me. And I said, "Where are we at on that list of the oldest projects on here that you're working on?" She said, "You're the oldest one." I know that because the project number starts with 15, 2015. How long do we have to wait? You folks are supposed to be responsive to the people that put you in office and elect you. It's time. It's overdue. Fine, do this development and expand your property tax base and make the city look better and create more housing options for people. That's all fine. And I'm not against that. Our neighbors aren't against that. But please fix this. At some point, it's got to get done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I, I would like to address some of the things that you said. First of all, you didn't read the entire message that I sent out loud. And when I say mystery, it's because I truly don't know how the culvert elevation was set. And I didn't know how much too low it was. But Rod DeYoung later said, "It's only a matter of a few hundredths of a foot," which is just inches, "that really won't make an appreciable difference at all in the grade." It's a flat area. And the mystery part of it is, I don't know why the culvert was set at that depth. I'm not the designer of it. And Heath and I discussed this, and I don't know if he's had time to question the designer of that culvert. Have you had that conversation with Austin yet?
I, I've started conversations, but have not gotten a definitive answer to that question as far as the reason behind the elevation that was set and whether that could be adjusted up.
Right. Okay, so it, that's the mystery part of it. The, the fact of the matter is that the situation exists now. And fix is not a word I ever used. I certainly have empathy for you. I, I do. I understand the issue that you're dealing with. And it, you know, you don't like it. And I, I don't blame you, but to fix it is, is the wrong word, really. The, the city does not have that in the budget. And that's what Shane Waterman found out very quickly after he looked at the tile design, which would essentially dry that up. And that location was identified on the wetland map. And the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction over wetlands. And if the city were to completely dry that up by installing underdrains and a way for people to connect their sumps, which go 24/7 all throughout the summer, we would dry that up. And we would have to mitigate the loss of that wetland to the tune of, well, we've created a wetland and it doesn't matter. It exists today. What we would dry up has to be mitigated at a four-to-one ratio. So in other words, if we remove one acre of wetland, we have to create four acres of wetland somewhere else at taxpayer expense. And I, I just, I, $100,000 is not enough to pay for that. And it won't dry it up to change the grade on that channel because everyone, including the people who don't like that behind their homes, pump, like you said, 24/7 groundwater out of the ground to the surface. That will never be dry as long as there are houses above it. Until, if we put that in an underdrained pipe and have everybody directly tie to it, we could do that. But we can't do that within the budget of $100,000. We're probably talking half a million or more by the time we get the wetland mitigated. So the fact is, the city purchased that property for drainage purposes. And there were pros and cons on whether to put it in a pipe, put it in a concrete channel, or leave it in its natural state. And there were pros and cons published, and we can show you that in the study. The cons to doing what we did were that people are going to complain that it's wet and there are cattails and insects. And they won't like the wild nature of it. But the, the pro is, that's the least expensive alternative and the best alternative for water quality control. Because a natural wetland exists and is exacerbated by the fact that everyone's pumping groundwater to the surface. There's ample habitat for wetland plants and animals. And they exist there. And that's actually good for water quality. It's good for the environment. A concrete-lined channel or a pipe under the ground is not good for water quality. And it's also extremely more expensive to put it in a pipe and put it underground and dry it up like the neighbors would like. But the fact of the matter is, if we don't put that in a pipe that everyone connects their sump to, it will always be wet because people pump groundwater to the surface 24/7. We had a recent council meeting where we discussed that. So fix is not a word I used. Mitigate is a word I have used and try to make it better. But I have never claimed that we would dry that up because I know that's not in our budget. And it's probably not, no, sorry, Mike. I'm, I'm going to have to call procedure here. You, you've-
Can I ask one question? If you can't fix it, why do you keep allowing more building permits east of that channel and keep exacerbating the problem? If, if it's a problem you can't fix, you keep-
I'll answer that.
I mean, there, there's a single-family home that's being built by East River Homes right now that's under construction, right on that corner where Cherry bends. Across the street, Heilmann is building more homes.
Thanks, Mike. I, I understand your question. And I don't, I don't want this to be a debate.
If you can't fix a problem, don't keep building.
But what we can do, we, we can't tell those people to stop pumping because they, they have building permits. The city issued them. And the city was entirely within its rights to do so. And those people who own the property, just like your property, you pump groundwater, it's, the problem is throughout our town. And so we're recognizing that. And, and we can change things moving forward so that we have dry neighborhoods. But to go into a neighborhood which has this condition today and try to dry it up, it's just not cost-effective. And, and I'm sorry that you don't want to hear that, but I mean, you can, I am just one person. And if you can get two council members to agree that they'll put that on the agenda for consideration of drying it up at whatever cost, open checkbook to do a wetland mitigation, then they can overrule me. But I've seen this go on and on, and I know the expense of having to do a wetland mitigation because we've done them in town. And they're expensive. And that, along with the fact that we bought that land for the purpose of having an open natural drainway, which we knew and we published in a report, that people wouldn't like because it would grow cattails and be wet all the time. We, we acknowledge that head-on. And when I say "we," I mean, the city council, probably about the year 2001, I think, was when they decided to start purchasing the land for that purpose. So the city was entirely within its rights to use that land in that way. And I, I can't say that there's any fault here that needs to be fixed. It's, it's a condition that exists that people don't like, true. It's a nuisance. And if I thought this were a flood risk, it would be a wholly different story. But this is a nuisance. And nuisances unfortunately take a backseat to critical issues of infrastructure failure or flood control and those sort of matters which need immediate attention. And so that's why it hasn't been done. I mean, we do have the money in the budget. We want to make this more appealing. And not everybody hates wetlands. Some people actually like them. And so if we can make it a little bit more amenable, it would still perform its function. So, and that was a lot of words. But anyway, I do appreciate your concerns. I, I really do. I just don't see the cost-benefit value in drying it up. So is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the plat? Please come forward. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against approval of the plat? Is there anyone that would like to speak and just say a comment? Neither pro nor con?
Connie Johnson, 1298 Cherry Drive. We have been in that neighborhood since 1996, before anybody ever had homes there. So I think I can speak for what the water has done and where it's been and where it's going. And I can tell you this, and I'm, I'm going to try to just be objective here, not one way or the other. There's more water up there now than there ever has been. And it doesn't go away. It used to go away. And what's really sad to me is that this is a new neighborhood in town. And it has been allowed to have roads that are constantly, the curb has water in them because people are running sump pumps all the time. I get that. They need to do that. But the water is there all the time. It doesn't go anywhere. I used to, I mean, I, I walked that area a lot where, when it used to be corn and beans and all that, that water wasn't there. And so I can say that, just from observation. And I can speak to what they're saying is, I agree with. It's an issue. And I don't understand, I guess, why we allow brand-new neighborhoods to get this way. It's nice. It's a nice neighborhood. So that concerns me. The other concern I have, and this is a question, is with this new development coming, it looks like it'll be nice. I don't have any yes or nos on that. My concern is 14th Avenue is a half a road there. And from 19th Avenue, 19th Street to 25th, it's a half a road. There've been many times when I come down 14th Avenue there, you have to move over. And because the shoulder is gravel, like I said, it's only half of a road. It's never been developed as a full road. It is, when it gets to those apartments, then it's a full road with curb on both sides. But on the north side of the road of 14th Avenue there, it is not. So my concern there is traffic. And oftentimes, I'll be coming down 14th Avenue and you have to move over. And the person that's coming to the east feels like they're on their half of the road already. So they don't really want to move too badly. So, and with construction going on, I know that there are trucks, there are trailers, there's a lot of stuff parked on those roads. And I don't know how you're going to deal with that. I guess that's my question. Have you thought that out ahead of time? That maybe that's going to be an issue, that you only have half a road and now you have 10 more lots, 20 more units, how many more cars coming off onto half a road there and that traffic? So that would be my question.
Thank you. So that was a comment, neither pro nor con. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Pro?
I'm Colin DeYoung from Austin Engineering. I'd just like to make some comments on the drainage. I know there is some issues with kind of the lower flows staying in the channel there and not making their way downstream. So it's causing a nuisance for the neighboring property. And we are working with the city as part of our development to incorporate some of the grading, to get the, the channel. So it has a better slope on it to get the water away from the culvert, you know, farther down the drainage way. And then also the, the drainage areas for this new development, we're actually going to take two-thirds of the water and outlet it into the main channel on the, the west side of the development instead of the, the east-west leg of the channel on the south end. So that should hopefully mitigate, you know, any concerns about drainage issues getting into that part of the channel and affecting the, the neighboring property to the south. And then as far as the snow removal- And then as far as the snow removal, once this channel is regraded to where it will convey those flows, you know, to the main channel better. I think that'll alleviate a lot of the, the standing water, the reed growth. It's gonna be more, more of an issue with sump pumps, that, that type of drainage. I guess that's all I have.
Thank you, Colin. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against the plat? Please come forward.
Hi, my name's Jessica Lassine. I live at 1289 Cherry Drive. And I was one of the first homes on Cherry. We actually built over Ken and Connie's driveway. And that channel was never there for a whole year after we built our house, we moved in our house. And a year later, there was a big excavator in there that was digging that channel. Again, like Mike said, I'm not against developing that area. But there's a problem, you know, with the water drainage and it doesn't drain. It's an issue for, my kids and my husband were out sledding this winter back there. My daughter fell off her sled and got up and she sunk into water up past her knees and my husband had to pull her out. So not only is it eyesore for us who pay high tax dollars in that neighborhood, but it's also a safety concern for our kids that live there. Sarah, you keep saying a nuisance. And here I have the National Plumbing Code. And in Chapter 11, it says that in the case of one and two-family dwellings, stormwater shall be permitted to be discharged on flat areas such as streets or lawns. So that, so long as the stormwater shall flow away from the building and away from adjoining property and shall not create a nuisance. We keep using the words that this is a nuisance. This is the National Plumbing Code book. So I don't know how we can keep developing to the east of us. That whole strip of homes on the east of us, that new home that's being built in that first lot has surface drains that are being put in. And so that whole channel of homes is gonna drain into those surface drains, which then is gonna go underneath Cherry Drive and then sit in that channel. Creating a nuisance for us, which is against National Plumbing Code. The homes further down the road, their backyards were a complete lake. And then they pump all their water into the road, which then drains all the way down Cherry and into that channel. So me, I feel like since 2013, when it was being dug, I've had open-ended promises. Saying from Mayor Thorson, it was gonna get fixed. We had the meeting. Sarah, you ran off fixing that. Your whole, basically your whole campaign was that you were gonna fix that. And so again, we have concerns that it's never gonna get fixed. And it's constantly creating a nuisance for the rest of us.
Thank you. And my campaign wasn't based on fixing that. My campaign was based upon enforcing our ordinances so that problems like these don't arise in the future. I mean, it exists today. I can't wave a magic wand. It's gonna be extremely expensive. And this isn't the only place in town where we have this, although you're a very vocal neighborhood. This exists throughout town and other places as well. So is there anyone here who has a comment?
Can I say one more thing?
Sorry, Mike. I'm gonna keep you to one. Otherwise it becomes a debate. And this isn't a debate.
I'm not gonna debate. I just forgot one comment I wanted to make.
Is there anyone else with, that wants to speak in favor? Any other comments? Any other against? Okay, Mike, you can ask your question. I'll try to answer it.
It's not a question. Just, well, first of all, when Don visited, we had a handshake agreement. Don, maybe you can share what we agreed upon? Okay. But you mentioned, Sarah, at a council meeting last month when we were debating a variance to build a house up in that area. That when you are in a wet area that's constantly pumping water, everything is wet and doesn't drain. It shortens the lifespan of the infrastructure in that neighborhood, correct?
Yes, that's true.
You know how much money you're spending sinking into the issues up in Northridge? You're going down the same path again. And if you want to spend money to fix up a bunch of potholed, rutted, junky streets and they're already falling apart and they're full of water with potholes all the time, that's your choice. But learn from what happened in Northridge, please, and, and fix it. And Don, maybe you can share our handshake agreement from a couple of days ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else that would like to speak pro, con, or make a comment? See, none. I'm going to close the public comment period and open for council discussion. Councilman Robey?
I've got three main points I want to make. First off, the bigger issue at hand in how we develop in Watertown, I want to address the staff first. A lot of these problems were handed to the current staff. So you guys are getting to deal with a lot of unpleasant things. I want to acknowledge the fact that, I think most of us understand that, that the problems that have arisen and the concerns that are out there, I don't want to vilify current staff. I want to make that clear. But in terms of the bigger issue, we had a similar discussion here recently in how we do develop, and specifically with water. One of the first issues I got when I joined the council was from a citizen in War Day who showed me their house that was perfectly fine when it was built. Then when everybody built around and they ran all the water down to their place, and now he has a wet basement. So this issue has been going on a lot, not just in War Day, although it's very prevalent up there. So the, the umbrella issue is how we develop in Watertown. What things do we need to consider to mitigate this from happening in the future? The second thing is the, the issue at hand, and that is this development. And I went back and watched the Planning Commission meeting. It was about an hour long on this topic. It was pretty well-vetted. I think they went through a lot of things, a lot of public input. The residents around there said we're not opposed to this development. It's actually a better fit than I think what was being looked at before with duplexes versus putting big complexes in there. And, and the, the thing that was vetted pretty well though is, and I'm looking if anybody heard differently, but they said that this development, if it's done the way they're designing it, it won't cause or exacerbate the problem there. And I'd like some validation on that from, from any of the city staff that can say, is that accurate?
Councilman Robey, I'm Meta Mayor. The short answer to that question is, is yes, that is accurate. Based on the calculations submitted by the consultant engineer, Austin Engineering, that's working on behalf of the developer. It is staff's responsibility to review those calculations to make sure that they meet all the design requirements of our stormwater runoff standards that we have adopted by past councils. And in this particular case, the additional runoff that this site would be producing because of the new impervious area, the shingles, the driveways, the rooftops, that increases runoff. This channel does show adequate capacity, not only for what we call the minor storm event, which is a two-year or a five-year, depending on the component you're designing for, but also the major storm event, which is a 100-year category of a rainfall event. And both of those storm events are adequately conveyed through these channels, both the east-west leg and the north-south leg.
The other point I was gonna make on this is an agreement that's coming up on one of our next agenda items, the Stormwater Best Management Practice Development Agreement. We don't have these in every development. We should. I don't believe the development of the east has one. But this gives, I think, some assurance that things will be followed through. And there are, it's an agreement that says we're gonna do the runoff properly. Is that a fair way to assess that?
Yes, Councilman Robey, Meta Mayor. The, it's called a BMP Development Agreement. That's the Best Management Practices, which is a catchphrase for a detention pond or a permanent drainage structure that's required to be built in order to mitigate stormwater runoff in any, in any development within the city. The BMP Maintenance Agreement puts the responsibility on the developer or they're assigned in the future to be responsible to maintain that detention pond, that water quality pond, whatever it might be for that development. And there are stipulations within there that not only require the completion of the construction of that, but more to do with the long-term and perpetuity, the, the maintenance and operations of that facility. And gives the city authority to access that property if we find that it is not functioning properly and need to do any maintenance that the owners at the time have been negligent to perform.
Okay. And Mayor Fialamo, just continue for a minute. So there, we do have an avenue for recourse if it doesn't perform as planned.
That's correct.
So the, again, the issue we're voting on tonight is to prove the development or not, okay? I do want to make a comment that I'll address what Mike said. And I did go up there and stay with Mike. It was my third trip to Cherry Creek, by the way, since I've been on the council. I brought it up at some, at numerous occasions, including council meetings. As I noted, my, my War Day alderman mate, Mike Danforth, brought it up a number of times too. And again, past cast members making commitments, what have you, nothing ever got done. And I will say, I am tired of hearing of it because it's been five years, like has been stated. So I made the commitment to Mike and others that I've talked with. I am gonna bring this up every meeting for the, for the finish of my second term here. Until we either get a resolution or a plan that's in place. So, and I don't know what the solution is. But whatever we do, and I've told Heath that I was gonna do this, we can't, it isn't a crisis yet, but it's been going on for five years. We, and I think we owe these people. They've been patient. If it'd been a year, maybe, maybe we're not so in such a hurry. But it's been five years. We gotta address the issue.
Thank you. Councilman Buehler?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we're talking about best management practices and water detention. You know, I, I lived on Grandview Drive, built a home over there some years ago. And in the Cottage Grove Park, which is just south of Lincoln School, they mitigated the runoff where they were having a lot of flooding issues down by the, by the high school, north of the high school and the junior high area. And that was done with berms. And I'm not, I'm not real sure about the elevation here. What they did, well, you probably know Heath, you've probably seen that by now. But they actually did excavate that so it would hold water. And then there were culverts placed that would meter that water out. I don't know if they're, I, I'm not saying that that would be the, the thing to do in that exact spot. But there may be other areas that you could mitigate that runoff. Because that's what they had to do. They had to do it clear up because of Northridge, because of the way that was set up years and years ago. All that runoff ended up down there and it flooded all those areas in that little creek area. You know, is there a potential? I mean, it's something we, we should absolutely take a look at and see if the elevations are correct to do that. Where it would retain and it allows the absorption of that water. And it would have to obviously be dug out to a certain point. That's exactly what they did with those berms in Cottage Grove Park. And I'm telling you what, it worked like a million, as far as I'm concerned, it worked like a million bucks. So just, just another thought.
Thank you. Councilman White?
I, I believe Mr. Tanner had made the comment about the, the snow being dumped up there in an area. And is he, were you talking of this development and it'll be dumped on city property? So a private, we allow that or how does that?
The ordinance says that no property owner can dispose of their snow on another private property owner or property owner's property without permission. So if the city grants permission, they can do it.
So we would grant permission for this?
They're requesting. That's up to the council, if you would grant that or not. If, if you say no, they'll have to haul their snow out. Because there's no room on their site for snow storage. And, you know, private roads, that's a private road. Public roads have a boulevard within the right-of-way where the snow is stacked. This development doesn't have that kind of space, so.
Do we have several agreements like that? Or are there other agreements like that in the city?
There's one. No, I, I don't know of any other agreement like that. But it's not to say that we couldn't write an agreement here. And I've suggested that it be a revocable agreement, which means if it causes a problem in the future, the city can say, well, we changed our mind with no repercussions. It's our property. We're allowing you to do that. And I'm not sure this would cause any kind of a problem. But if council members think that this would be a problem, then-
Well, if we set snow in that area that's already, has problems, it's only gonna create more problems if we allow it, correct?
Well, the amount of runoff that you get from a pile of snow is, it's deceiving. It's, it's not great. But it would serve to cause the ground to be wet as long as the snow is, is there and melting. And that might be two weeks. It might be three months. We, we can't predict that. And some years, I mean, we had snow in the snow pile one year till into July. I think that was 1998. But, you know, it varies. Other years, it's gone by March. So it would vary.
So if we approve this tonight, that'll also allow them to dump snow?
Yes. And Heath, you want to address that, please?
Yes, Meta Mayor, Councilman White. Subsequent action after this plat consideration would be a private road maintenance agreement. And within the confines of the, the terms of that agreement are spelled out the snow storage ability of the developer. As the mayor indicated, it is a recentable right that, that we, it's not in perpetuity that we would allow that, but it is a recentable right that we would give the developer to store snow roughly in this vicinity right here. I don't know if my map's still up, Ray. I, I would point out in that agreement, the language contemplates that snow storage use on the developer's behalf in part for exchange in constructing and installing the entire width along 14th Avenue North, a full 10-foot-wide pathway that they would otherwise not be required to install. The minimum requirement for them to install would be a standard four-foot sidewalk. So that was one of the terms that we, as staff, stipulated in the agreement to, for the council's contemplation of whether to allow the snow storage, for the developer's consideration of constructing the full 10-foot-wide pathway along the full extent of their development along 14th Avenue North. It was one way that I felt as staff, since I can't approve whether they can stack snow on the city property. One way that I felt is this might be a unique situation and maybe perhaps warrant the ability for them to use that as snow storage.
Councilman Bill Hauer?
Heath, a follow-up to that. I remember watching the Planning Commission meeting. That the motion, even though it was approved unanimously, there were a couple of conditions placed upon that motion. One, I think you've addressed fully with, with Don's concerns about will that development exacerbate runoff into this area? And the Planning Commission was asking for assurance from staff and/or engineers involved that it would not. I think you answered that question, a little bit going down. Asked the same question. The second condition on that, on that motion had to do with the store, it's no issue. And I just want, I just want to point that out, that that was a concern enough of the Planning Commission that there was a condition placed upon that motion so that we, so that we don't ignore or, or, you know, you know, lessen the, the concern that was expressed about the snow storage. I don't know what the options are, but I, I just want to point out that that was a concern the Planning Commission did place upon their motion, if I'm not mistaken. Just in general, I've been on the, on the council now for four years. One of my very first meetings in fall of 2015, this issue came up. I mean, I, I feel for you folks. You know, Mike, you showed us around, like you said, last week when we were up there. And I, you know, I empathize with you. Unfortunately, that's not the issue that we're dealing with directly tonight. We need to stay on, on task with that as far as approving or disapproving the, the plat for the development. But this is something that does need ongoing attention, not only in your area, but throughout the city. Like, like Don pointed out a few minutes ago, that we, we've made some mistakes in the past. I hope we can learn from them. What the fix is or how we mitigate it, I don't know at this point. But relative to the, the, what's before us tonight, the Planning Commission did fully vet that with the exception of a couple of conditions like I pointed out. And I guess I, I've gotta support what the Planning Commission did in their recommendation to bring it forth to the council.
Thank you. There are certain rights that people have when they own property. And if they are following our rules and complying in every sense, it's really difficult for the city not to-
our rules and complying in every sense, it's really difficult for the city not to approve a development. And that could be seen as a taking. And so, the city tries to accommodate as much as possible and being responsible. And I, I would like to reiterate, I, I believe the staff has done this. So, we have pretty stringent drainage requirements for any development. So, I'm going to ask the city engineer to respond to a series of questions about this development. And Heath, has the developer complied with all of the requirements for stormwater management in this development?
Madam Mayor, yes, they have. In terms of the minimum requirements to detain the minor storm event, the two-year event, and to install water quality BMPs to mitigate water quality from the runoff, those two criteria have been met.
And have they addressed the impacts of the runoff?
Yes, and I appreciate that question, because it allows me to go into a little bit of a, a background behind this particular drainage basin. This is a tributary basin to what we would call the Willow Creek Drainage Basin. We have a drainage report on staff, on hand at staff here at the engineering office that recommends that the major storm event in this basin go undetained. The theory being that the tributary is going to the Willow Creek Basin for the major runoff event, 100-year storm event, get to that basin and out before the ups, the further upstream flows get to the city. The logic there is we don't want to detain these major event flows and have them arrive at the same time as the upstream runoff and cause more catastrophic flooding within the community. So, that being said, this particular drainage basin is not required to detain the 100-year storm event, so long as they can show that those flows can go undetained without having adverse impacts to the downstream properties. That is one of the calculations that we went back to the developer's consultant on and requested that they perform that analysis. Since the last planning commission meeting, we have received that information and verified with our own review of that information, that it does indeed convey the major storm Interestingly enough, the, the direct basin that this area gets fed runoff is just shy of 100 acres. And the calculations show if that were fully developed as residential, that this would still convey the major storm event without adverse impact downstream. That's without any consideration for any future detention on those remaining acres to be developed. That is strictly everything going undetained, and those flows contributing to both this north-south main channel and to the east-west portion of this channel. So, I know that's a long explanation, but I wanted to provide that backstory about the additional work that is required for this development to occur and showing there is no downstream impact for the major storm event, because they are not being required to detain those flows.
Has the requirement to show the elevation of the lowest finished floor been completed?
Yes, they do display that on their preliminary plan.
Okay. Are there basements?
No, I believe every structure up here is planned to be a slab-on-grade or perhaps a crawl space configuration.
And, and what that boils down to is that we do not expect that there will be groundwater pumped to the surface from this development, that it will be dry except when it rains, and then you'll have stormwater runoff, but not groundwater pumped to the surface. If everyone in your neighborhood and upstream did that, that channel would be dry except during a rain event. And obviously, that's not the case. But moving forward, as in this one, we believe this one will comply. How about traffic? Do you, do you feel that there's adequate capacity in 14th Avenue to convey the traffic generated by this development?
Based on current uses and the amount of traffic coming and going through 14th to get to the easterly parts of the Prairie View subdivision, I would say that yes, that there, there would be adequate width here. This half-road that exists that I, that was cited, that is a common practice that we've seen in the past in Watertown where development occurred on one side of a property and the other side, future development was unknown and could be several years down the road. So, we've allowed for those half-street configurations, and that's allowed in our standards as well, the subdivision regulations. I would note that we would definitely monitor any use of 14th for parking of construction trailers and things like that, to where we would follow the typical and customary standards of all construction activity being contained on the site and not to impede traffic unnecessarily that way.
And parking should be prohibited on 14th Avenue North until a full street section is completed. That will help a lot as well. This development has a private road. Have they complied with all of the private road requirements in our ordinances?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and that is vetted through the design review team, that the staff gets together with the fire department, wastewater, streets department, engineering, planning, building services, and we review all the design criteria that need to be met. When it comes to private streets, one in particular is the fire department and their need for access with the fire apparatus that they operate. And a minimum 28-foot wide street width is provided on this private street. That being said, we have suggested to prohibit parking on the southerly portion or the outside. Here's a map of the street configuration. The westerly, southerly, and then over here, the easterly portion, we are requiring it, no parking be allowed. And for that, because of that, we're able to place the hydrants on that southerly side for fire truck access, and we're also requesting that trash pickup be from that southerly side as well to allow garbage truck access.
Thank you. And does this development comply with all of our zoning regulations?
It does. Those have been reviewed as well through the design review team and vetted through the plan commission meeting.
So, do you feel that you've done a thorough analysis of all the requirements and that this development meets their requirements?
I do, Madam Mayor. You know, there are a lot of boxes to be checked when we vet a subdivision of any kind through the community, as with any community, and for the reasons that these citizens have brought forth today. And it's imperative for us as staff to do a, a, an objective review of those cementals. And that's what I feel we've done in this case.
Thank you. Now, I don't want anyone to think we're dismissing their concerns. We recognize them, they're valid. The fix is probably not this developer's responsibility, but the city will keep that in mind. Are there any other questions from the council or comments? Councilman Danforth?
Heath, I, I sent you a, an email today, and Mayor, I copied you on that, asking a simple question, is, is going back in time, the 20 years approximately, when this area was first looking to be developed, and then also all the way southward through the Kinsman Is this watershed area performing as it was intended to 20 years ago? Because I think that's really important. We can, we can say what we like or don't like, but the fact of the matter is, is it performing as it was intended? And if it's not, then we've got to do something. But if it is, then, then, to me, that's a whole different issue. So, that, that was my question. Heath, if you wanted to just touch, Mayor, what your thoughts were, because I know you both responded.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Heath.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilman Danforth. My, from the information that I've gathered here, I, I completely agree with the citizens. This segment behind their house, I'll zoom in on it again here, is not performing as expected. And as we've indicated in the plan commission meeting, that's in part due to the excavation that occurred about through this extent, since you can pretty much see it on this aerial. It ends about right here. And what happened is it was what I would call over-excavated. It was dug a little bit too deep to where it does not daylight out and continually flow down through into the main channel. So, the fix, the mitigation, the correction, whatever we want to call it, that city has been aiming to do is to regrade this like a natural drainage swale, a natural drainage channel would be, re-up positive flow from your two control points. Now, in this case, we have the culvert that's been discussed as one control point upstream, and then we have some point downstream as the other control point that we have to work within to get this to grade out and smoothly and uniformly flow like the rest of this main north-south channel does. With that, I would also point out really the obvious. I mean, if you look at this north-south channel and any other natural drainage channel throughout the community, whether it's Watertown or any other community that you go to, you do oftentimes see that these natural drainage channels have vegetation. They have cattails, they have reeds. Sometimes if they're not managed, or depending on how they're managed and how they need to be managed, some will have more trees than others, and you get a lot of vegetation that can start to encumber flows. That being said, when we regrade this east-west portion with the city project to eliminate that trench that's there now, I would expect to see, and I, I would heed caution for the residents, to expect to see some amount of vegetative growth to continue to occur there, because it is a natural drainage swale. So, that being said, when you look at the rest of this channel and its functionality, we have not received any other calls as far as backwater, but, you know, our next choke point here, if you will, or a control point as far as the flow goes, are the culverts underneath the street here to the south. I believe this is 12th Avenue. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, that's your next control point that would be of concern, and whether those are, are sized and performing appropriately. And I believe they have been based on the lack of flooding concerns or issues like that that we've received. And then, as you continue to chase this further south and downstream, the next consideration would be the culverts underneath. I apologize, I don't have this street name memorized either.
10th.
10th? That makes it easy. And then, you know, you're, once you get past that point, it's a open channel for, for there out for quite a distance. So, that being said, if we were to have issues here in the future, it would likely be at 12th or 10th, and the need to replace those culvert structures, maybe upsize them, reconfigure them in some manner. But I have not seen the need expressed or witnessed any need for that at this time.
I would like to add, though, that it's, it's misleading. I know that Austin Engineering already embarked on a project to improve the drainage, and I mean, I think they tried. I don't know, with that small of elevation grade change throughout a channel, and it's, it's natural, it will have ups and downs, and it's, it's going to naturally create little ponds and pockets. The fact that there's groundwater being pumped to the surface even during dry periods, it's going to be wet no matter what, unless we put a pipe in and everybody, including everybody along Cherry Drive downstream, pipes directly to a pipe, their sump drainage, that will have water in it all the time. There's a lot of houses, and that's considerable expense to go to to dry it up. And I already said this, but then we need to mitigate the loss of the wetland. So, there, there is a cost benefit to trying to dry it up. We can try again to regrade the channel. I know that, I know you don't know this, Heath, but we did try, like, we, the developer tried to do that, the upstream developer of Prairie View tried to do that, and there's just not that much fall to, to make it happen. If, if you want to try again, I guess I'd be open to that, but I don't want people to think that regrading the channel will dry it up, because it won't. And this was purchased for drainage purposes, it's serving drainage purposes. Natural channels often have little pockets and ponds, and so, from that perspective, this is functioning in the way that we expected it would when we purchased it. So, does that answer your question, Councilman Danforth? Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. I'm going to look for action, then. Motion on the table is to approve the plat of Eastwoods 19th addition. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number five is authorization for the mayor to sign a development agreement for the plat of Eastwoods 19th addition. I'll look for a motion and second for approval.
So moved.
A motion by Lalum, second by Bueller. And again, I'll ask Heath to describe, this is the same project. These items four, five, six, and seven apply to the same development. So, item five is the development agreement. Heath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So, the development agreement correlates directly with the plat. Before any plat can be filed, the developer is required to either construct all the public improvements or enter into a development agreement with the city that obligates him to construct those public improvements. In this case, the development agreement also includes the private street that was discussed in the previous action, but also includes the necessary wastewater, sanitary sewer pipe that needs to be put in, and the, the water distribution line that also needs to be installed, as well as other obligations for the developer to follow through with, as is common with any other development within the community. Glad to help answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Robey?
How will minor changes be handled and how, and approved, and how will major changes be handled and approved?
Thank you, Councilman Robey. Madam Mayor, the, any changes to the construction plans, which are the documents pending these actions that we would receive? The construction plans would outline the specific details for the construction of these public improvements. Those get vetted and reviewed by city staff, just like the, the plat and the preliminary plan did. We want to make sure that, again, the streets are constructed as, as outlined, the wastewater, the sanitary sewer and the water distribution lines, and the drainage components, the stormwater runoff BMPs. In the review of those construction plans, we, we confirm a final approved set of plans. And if those plans are amended at all through the construction process, because as we all know, during construction projects, change can happen and be necessitated by field conditions, what I would do is require that the developer's engineers submit to us an amended version of the plan for us to review and approve. Now, as far as quantifying minor versus major changes, I, I think that's something we would administratively decide on. If I feel it's something warranted to be documented on a new plan sheet that shows the amended design, like the change in the street grade, for example, we would require that be submitted on a new draft, CAD-drafted document that we would put in the file as an approved amendment to those plans.
Who from the city signs off on that?
My experience is that the city engineer, that would be their role. I don't know if we've had a structured process in the past here in Watertown or not. If we have not, I would suggest that the city engineers sign off on those amendments. Depending on the level of impact, if it were something extremely impactful to the surrounding development, I would bring that to the mayor's attention and likely, you know, pending our conversation, raise to the council, the level of the council if needed. But generally speaking, it's something that can be administratively reviewed and approved at the engineering level.
This development is somewhat unique in that although there are 10 lots in it, there are very little public improvements. Most of the improvements in here are private, they'll be privately owned and maintained. We will own the sewer, and we will own the sidewalk or the bike trail that's being constructed, but we will not own the road, nor will we own any of the drainage features within it. And normally, a development agreement would address those items, like the drainage features, and if, if anything is affecting the development agreement, which is what you're approving tonight, if a change to that development is, agreement is pondered, then that would come back to the council. Any other questions? Councilman Lalum?
On this here, it is a homeowners association, correct?
Yes.
Okay. If we do not own the road, but we own the sewer and we have to do sewer repair or something, there's failure in that, who's responsible for that road replacement?
Is that addressed, Heath, in the agreement?
I believe that language is in the private road maintenance agreement. I'll defer to staff, too, if they know definitively, but I'm, I'm certain it's in one of the agreements, if not the development agreement, I believe it's in the private road maintenance agreement.
Okay. And then, this is a two-year deal. My recommendation would be that we have street and sewer go out when you guys do that final, on the two years, it's city engineer within two years recorded, so we can do the final plat approval. Does that make sense? Or final inspection? So, we don't have the same issues that we had to the east of this?
Oh, yes, good question. I think where you're going with this is actually something that the developer discussed. that the developer discussed with us, to put in there some language regarding the turnaround time for city staff to go out and make final inspection.
Yes.
And that's exactly what we included in here, to respond within, I remember it's 15 or 30 days, so that upon the developers' engineer giving us notice that the improvements are complete, we would respond in a timely manner to go out and make that final inspection and then take those improvements to council for a certification of completion. And this is something we did a while back here with Eighth Avenue. And then subsequently, that would trigger the one-year warranty period, and then at that point, we bring it back to council for final acceptance.
Yep.
Councilman Danforth?
I'm just gonna bring up a point of discussion, and that is the storage of the snow that is removed from the property. I'm curious if that doesn't set a precedence in how you're gonna answer to that when you've got other businesses or properties that may be close to or adjacent to city properties and ask the same question now. I'm not sure how we address that on an ongoing basis, and in light of the concern that has been expressed, and we've all discussed for the last hour and 15 or 20 minutes in regards to the water content in that area, I think we're asking for a problem, even if there might not be any aggravation, it would be deemed an aggravation. And I think it's a bad precedence when you look at anybody else that might have close proximity that one might want to store snow for whatever the reason on city property. I think it needs to be seriously discussed and considered.
Okay.
To not be a part of the development agreement.
Councilman Danforth, that's an excellent point that you're making, and I want to point out that that is covered by item number seven, and we're on item number five, so we will be talking about that.
I don't have to say all that over again, do I?
No, I won't make you repeat.
Thank you.
We'll address that in a few minutes. Anybody else have any other comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number six is authorization for the mayor to sign a stormwater best management practice development agreement for the plat of Eastwoods 19th addition. So look for a motion, second for approval. Motion by Bueller and second by Roby. And Heath, will you please tell us about this one?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, this agreement stems from our post-construction stormwater BMP manual and the requirement to enter into an agreement with the developer that holds them responsible for the ownership and maintenance aspects of any best management practice that helps manage and mitigate stormwater runoff from their development. There's a lot of language in the agreement that particularly relates to the responsibility to keep it maintained and functioning properly, so there aren't any adverse impacts from overflows or flooding of the facility without proper maintenance. It gives the city, as I indicated earlier, it gives the city the right to access that property if we find that it's not performing properly, and it puts the onus on the developer to be responsible for any costs that we may incur to perform that kind of work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions, Councilman Roby?
Just, I want to repeat what I said earlier. This weighed heavily in my decision. This document, I think it's a great document. This should be involved in every development we do, and I think if you read through it, what it does, it gives recourse to the owners, the neighbors in this case. If something doesn't perform the way it's supposed to, once the developer exits the project, this travels with the land, so it goes on in this case to the homeowners' association.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Heath, this is a standard BMP agreement, similar to the ones that we've executed in the past, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there anything unique about this one?
No, not that comes to mind. I believe it's a pretty boilerplate, as is most of our development agreements that we took previous action on.
All right, thank you. I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Now, Mike, this is the one. Item number seven is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement for the construction and maintenance of private road for the plat of Eastwoods 19th addition. Is there a motion for approval? Moved by Councilman Vilhauer. Second by Councilman Danforth. And Heath, would you please describe this agreement and all of the conditions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This agreement too is part of our subdivision regulation requirements. Anytime a developer entertains building a private road within our community to support their development, we want to make sure certain criteria are met to allow the appropriate ingress and egress to that subdivision. Again, some of the points I touched on earlier, I won't reiterate them all, but making sure it's of adequate width, emergency responders, and public services have access to and through the roadway. This also obligates the developer or their assigns in the future to be financially responsible for any maintenance activities on this road. That includes snow removal, patching, pavement replacement down the road. All those aspects of ownership and maintenance of a road are the responsibility of the developer or their homeowners' association in the future, in this case. I did comb through this briefly. I don't see, and I might have missed it, but to go back to the question of the repairs of the sanitary sewer, it does say that the developer is responsible for general surface repairs, and I can continue to comb through this after the meeting and make sure the sanitary sewer repair language is explicitly in there if it's not already. But in some ways, that goes without saying that they are responsible for all surface repairs as well.
So if we were to come and repair the sewer 40 years from now, and we dug up part of the asphalt, the city would pay for that repair. Is that true, or?
The obligation in this case, what I would propose is that the homeowners' association would be responsible for those repairs.
Does the agreement say that, though?
That's what I would need to verify, and if it does not, if the motion would include me, the requirement for me to make sure that language is in there, I would do so.
Okay, I looked through it. I don't see anywhere where it contemplates that. However, item B3 does address the snow storage and says essentially that the developers are required to obtain a revocable encroachment agreement for the snow storage area on city property to be filed with the register of deeds, and it is acknowledged that said revocable encroachment agreement would be considered in exchange for the developers constructing the 10-foot wide trail as opposed to a four-foot wide sidewalk. And it further says that if the agreement is revoked, the city will not be required to reimburse the developers for the cost to construct the recreation trail along 14th Avenue Northeast. So the city can revoke the permission to store the snow on the public property without negative repercussions on the city. Does that answer your question, Councilman Danforth?
Well, what we're doing is we're horse trading, right?
Yes.
So I'm not really sure that that... We gotta make a decision whether that justifies the potential problems, is really what it's about.
Right, and this doesn't make any mention of the fact that there's fill going on public property as well, and they're changing the grade of the neighboring property, and by virtue of approving this, we're allowing it. So if you'd want to change that, we'd need to amend the motion. Councilman Y?
This would allow them to dump snow from the roads onto city-owned property. Would it prevent them or stop them from taking the side, because I'm assuming it's HOA, so if they are cleaning the driveways and the sidewalks, can they take and put that snow on there as well in that, on that city property?
I believe so. I don't think it differentiates where the snow came from.
No, it does not.
So, yeah, they can put snow on the city property from their site.
I'm just gonna ask a question. Let's just go back and let's say that this is already done, and let's say we had a winter like we did this year, or we had a winter like we had in 96 or '07, whatever that was. What amount of snow would have been there? What would that look like? What kind of an area and capacity can that thing hold? That... Because you've got 10 lots, two different driveways, at least double-wide driveways, right, and everything else that goes with it, plus all the roadway, how much capacity is going to be allowed to go into there as far as snow is concerned?
It's unlimited. Do you have a question?
I do, Mayor.
Councilman Bueller?
What would be option B for the developer if we did not allow the storage of snow in that vicinity?
Well, they could eliminate one of their buildings and snow store on their own property. They could totally redesign and allow boulevards to put the snow on like we have on our public streets, or they can haul the snow out. There might be other options. Those jumped mind.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I could point out the intent behind the agreements, and I'm sorry to backpedal on this one, but you mentioned the grading. The grading was addressed in the development agreement, and it required the developer to go into a separate agreement to allow for the off-site grading on city property. The snow storage is addressed in the private road agreement, and it also requires the developer to enter into a revocable encroachment agreement to use the city's property for snow storage. The terms of those agreements can be outlined however we wish, you know, as long as they're amicable between the city and the developer, and something that I would work out with the city attorney. As far as the terms, we would want to apply to either one of those agreements as far as the grading on city property and the snow storage.
So right now, the city mows all of the private, all of the public property and is responsible for maintaining it, and if they grade it, they'll have fill, and then they'll seed it, and the grass seed will take, and then the city will again be responsible for mowing and maintaining the differently sloped, still public ground, correct?
That's correct.
So, Councilman Roby?
Heath, my understanding is that if they piled a tremendous amount of snow in there in a big snow year, if it caused a drainage issue with the ditch we've been talking about all night, is there not some coverage with the BMP on that? That applies to that as well, correct? Because that's gonna be, that's gonna be, you know, water runoff when it melts.
Yes, if I understand your question correctly, Councilman Roby, as far as the establishment of vegetation on that disturbed area that occurs when the site is regraded, they would be responsible under their BMP requirements to make, you know, the vegetation be established again, which would help prevent sediment runoff from the snow melt. I don't know if that's the question you were getting at.
I'm just seeing a raw water volume, so if it's a 20, I don't know, 100-foot-high mound of snow, it melts and floods, it floods everybody's backyard. The BMP covers that runoff.
I got you with your question there, and I may have to defer to the developers' engineer. Without looking at the contours right here, I, some of that snow pile would likely flow undetained to the channel. Some of it may end up in their BMP to the north, depending on the grade that is left behind in that snow storage area.
Is there runoff from the public property onto their property? I don't understand how the BMP could collect any of the snow stored on the city property.
If that, and that's what I'm saying, depending on how the final grades were left on the snow storage area, it could be split where the piles half flowing north, the other half's flowing undetained to the south. Because I think the grades will be fairly tight in that area, fairly flat, as far as I know.
If it's butted right up to their own roads, it would flow into their BMP, but if the snow is entirely on the city property, it'll all go into the undetained area, correct?
Yes, depending on the final contours, that's correct.
It's a quick follow-up. If it isn't covered by the BMP, but that situation happens, then the revocable agreement kicks in. Okay.
Yeah, Councilman Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, as Heath mentioned, the future, so this document mentions that we'll enter into that revocable agreement with the developer, and a term of that agreement could be setting some sort of parameters for when we would say, okay, no more snow this season, if that's what you're, if that's what you're getting at. I'm not sure, but...
It's not a problem.
Right.
Good questions. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the private road maintenance agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Albertson is absent. Bueller? Danforth? Lalum? Manti, absent. Roby?
Aye.
Solum? Thorston, absent. Vilhauer?
Aye.
Y?
Nay.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five to two. Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, item number eight is approval of invoice from Randall Stanley Architects, Inc. for additional services in the amount of $40,047 for the Ice Arena project. And I'll look for a motion, second for approval. Motion by Lalum. Second by Bueller. Okay, and I will describe what this is. The Ice Arena project had apparently been approved before I became mayor, and I was not aware of that. It was a verbal approval by the former mayor, and there was also a provision in the contract which said any services which are rendered after a certain date would be extra or additional, billed out as additional services. So you can see there's two invoices on there. One is for a bill for $720. A councilman, with my permission, called and asked about the number of parking spots that were calculated as necessary for the Ice Arena, and the architect billed their time in looking through their records to see what that number was, and they estimated that it cost them $700, $720 to look that number up for our councilman. And I objected. I said, we already paid for you to do this work. I don't think we should have to pay for it again. So they did back off on that. They put that bill back to zero. They also didn't negotiate that dollar amount for the second invoice, which is $40,000 down, and I also objected to this a little bit, but we went back and forth. When I became mayor, I did not want to be in charge of approving an Ice Arena I knew nothing about, and so I didn't realize that the former mayor had approved the design already, and I assigned a committee, and the committee reviewed it and found some problems with the design and went back and forth with the architect, and later they sent this bill, which I discussed with the architect, and they feel very strongly that the additional services are allowed by the contract, and the wording is indeed in the contract. It says that if this design isn't done by, I believe the date was February of 2018, that any work beyond that date will be billed out like this. I just didn't realize that was happening, so here we go. But I do think that the work was necessary. There were some problems with the design that the committee found and was not happy with. Things had to change. So had we gone ahead and built the facility that was designed before I was mayor, I don't think we would be happy with it as a community. So I think this is money well spent. It's necessary changes to the design, and so I'm, I have negotiated this down to this amount with the architect. Does anybody have any questions about that? Comments? Councilman Vilhauer?
Where are we at with our...
Where are we at with RSA going forward on this project? What's, what's our agreement? I mean, are we done with them now?
No, we're not done with them.
I guess that's my question, what kind of arrangement do we have going forward then as far as additional compensation to them?
Well, this ends one phase, the preliminary phase. And if we decide to keep the location of the ice arena across from the softball complex, we'll move forward with that. And the next stage of the design will take place. We'll get the dollar amount from the construction manager at risk. And we'll go into final design and construction drawings. At this point, we have an agreement or that has to happen with the council to either accept or not accept building the ice arena at the mall instead of at this location. So, if we do decide to change the location, then we have to renegotiate the contract. So, until we decide where we're putting it, we're at a standstill with the architect.
That's my question, thank you.
Yeah, I hope that's clear. Councilman Lalum?
So, if we change locations, do we still use, do we have to use the same architect?
Well, we would have to renegotiate the contract because the contract says where we're building it and it's not at the mall.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number ten is update of the concept budget for the airport terminal from Mead and Hunt. And there's no action required on this. And apologize, you guys have been waiting for a long time. So. Todd Siree, our airport manager is here. Will you please do the introductions?
Yes, Todd Siree, airport manager. We have Mitch Walker with Mead Hunt. And we have Michael Schmidt with Helms Engineering. So, this was proposed at the airport board today as a, this is the final draft before we send it off to the FAA for approval for the concept budget report for the Watertown Regional Airport Terminal. With that, I'll turn it over to Mitch.
Is this it? There we go, all right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the council. Do we want to hit some lights here? I guess, would that make things a little easier? Yeah, we'll just ride with it. All right, wonderful. So, I'm Mitch Walker with Mead and Hunt. First off, I just wanted to thank, this is the final draft of the concept budget report that has been now published and will be sent to the FAA in all likelihood tomorrow. So, we wanted to provide council with a presentation on what our findings were. I just want to state again that I really appreciated the airport board in this process. They were highly engaged throughout the entire, the entire process. So, I'll just speed through some of this. We were hired late last fall to do a twofold process. There was discretionary dollars to the tune of one billion dollars that was additionally appropriated by the FAA for small town airport development. What the city wanted to do and what Mead and Hunt provided was a very quick study as to what that, what that would cost for a terminal, a terminal study. Right now, your terminal building is over fifty years old. It's been added on to a couple of different times and is showing its wear. So, we looked at that application last fall. We sent that in. We found out in March we were not selected, although there were only two terminal projects that were selected. So, it was a pretty, a pretty small amount. Step two is to, is to provide a concept budget report for future design and construction. So, this concept budget report that I'm gonna kind of go through briefly today is a requirement whether or not we're, we get supplemental funding in this fiscal year nineteen. Now, the additional appropriations for the FAA was five hundred million dollars this year. And we feel like we're set up very well to go after that money. But again, regardless, if we are not selected for supplemental appropriations, this concept budget report is the first step of a process to build a terminal building regardless. So, the, and if, and if we're not selected immediately, then that project is slated for two thousand twenty-one. And then I will go through each section again briefly as a part of the concept budget report. And then just if there are any questions throughout, just please go ahead and raise your hand or just blurt them out, my goodness. All right, so.
Councilman Vilhauer?
Sorry to slow you down, Mitch.
No, please.
Can you, I mean, you just got through saying that, okay, we were turned down, only two airport, only two terminal projects were approved. And then the next sentence you said, oh, now we've, there's five hundred million that's available and we're situated very well, something like that. Why the confidence then, or why do you, how can you say that after being rejected the last time around?
Well, first off, with the one billion dollars, or I guess right around eight hundred million dollars that was appropriated just in, in March is when the final notifications came out. That takes about that eight hundred million dollars out of the AIP regardless. So, so that now, that money is now available to be used for some potential discretionary. And then, and then we also add the five hundred million dollars to it. Now, there's still, there's been discussions with the FAA that, that they understand the need that Watertown has. Now, that's something that we can't, we can't lean on. We can't, you know, build this thing due to it. But I can tell you that we're, we're set up very well to make the case for it.
There's also a billion dollars every year for the next four years with the FAA reauthorization bill Mr. Trump put into effect last year. Being the five-year longest-running FAA reauthorization bill, reauthorization bill since the eighties. So, with that, there's a billion dollars every year for supplemental airport improvement projects, so.
Thanks, Dan. So, this is, we first go into data collection, which involves terminal inventory and then forecasting. So, right now, this is an area of the terminal area as we see it. We focused on the entry drive, the loop road, and then the terminal area, which would be parking areas, the terminal building itself. And then the airfield apron where the aircraft park. We did look at just the kind of general location of the FBO, which, or general aviation facilities as well, as there is a requirement by the FAA to provide ample separation between commercial service and general aviation service. Yeah.
Sorry. Could we turn some more light off so we can see?
Brighten this thing up a little bit?
Getting closer. Middle one, if we can do it. There, that's, that's good.
All right, thank you. All right, as a part of data collection again as well, we identified some areas of concern within the existing terminal building. I won't read through all of these. They're listed in the concept budget report, but I will highlight a couple of them. One is just overall, you have an incredibly small airport terminal building. That can be seen just today when there were, there were two flights, one of which was IROPs or irregular operations due to a delay out of Denver. That resulted in two aircraft being on the ground and the people that were in that facility just, it was over capacity. There were no seats in the pre-secure area as well. Secondly, amenities, and I'll get these as, as just very basic. Your post-secure hold room only has one toilet, one unisex toilet. So, once you go through security, there's just one unisex toilet. That toilet also provides a secondary use as the TSA private screening area, which is just not ideal for anyone if you, if you require additional private screening. Not, not a great situation. The, and really what happens, what it comes down to is that this facility is just not equipped to handle post-nine eleven security. The TSA lane basically encroaches all the way into the hold room area, so much so that what they, what they'll end up doing operationally is open up the hold room area, start screening passengers through, and then have a gate agent there to already just usher people out to the aircraft. So, there's not a lot of wait time in that hold room, which is, is just not ideal from a stress standpoint or just operationally. I'll go through some more of these, a little bit clearer. Just space constraints. Now, this is the TSA queue lane. This also is the exiting lane. So, because operationally you have to keep that hold room closed because it can't handle that capacity, what ends up happening is you have people who are trying to get on a, on the aircraft or go through TSA in the exact same queue line as people who are actually landing in Watertown. And those people who are landing in Watertown are standing in the exact same queue line waiting for their bags to come across. That's that silver roll-up door behind all of those people. That's not even taken into account the fact that this is a meet or greeter area. So, you would want to have families and people waiting for their loved ones. So, space constraints is a major issue. This is that post-secure area. So, you can see there are even little footprints where you have to stand as a TSA and hold your arms out. And that is in the unisex restroom, which is again, just not a good situation at all. Post-secure does not have any, this is the only vending machine it has, so no concessions really, no gift shop, news and gifts. The, the apron area actually slopes into the terminal. So, we're talking about grading quite a bit. This is also another problem that we have where, you know, on a significant rainfall, that hold room area will just become wet. Today, again as well, we had roof leaks in a couple of locations within the terminal building. And then baggage makeup area, right now, you only have, you're only able to screen bags by actually opening them up and individually swabbing them. And, and when those bags stack up, when a lot of people check luggage, that becomes a real problem just from a space standpoint. This is the existing terminal building. This is about ten thousand square feet. Also includes airport admin and a conference room as well as FAA, RCO, or tech ops. This is ten thousand square feet. What we have found in our studies based on industry standards and, and the employment, peak hour employment numbers, you would be eligible for about twenty-four thousand square feet. So, you're well under half normal size. I'm gonna go through this very briefly, forecasting models. You've seen this before. This is the catchment area that we would see, people would fly from this catchment area out of Watertown. What's unique about this is it also includes up towards the Aberdeen area because Watertown flies direct to Denver and then also next month, direct to Chicago, whereas Aberdeen flies just to Minneapolis. Overall, there's about a hundred and forty-five thousand people that fall within the catchment area. Now, the catchment area, level of service breeds leakage and that's kind of what we would say here. The level of service or just the facility itself kind of allows for leakage to other airports, other surrounding airports. And what we want to do is provide the facilities and the reliable air service that you have with United right now to keep those passengers flying out of Watertown. This is a, this is the preferred employment forecast. I'm just gonna focus on the two columns to the right. The TAF is the terminal area forecast. That's approved by the FAA. Now, you can see your number has been stagnant and has been, has been stagnant for quite a while. That's the FAA-approved number. But it's, it looks like that because of, again, past unreliable air service where you've had kind of a roller coaster in how your employments are doing. Right now, your employments are through the roof. It is really incredible. The additional air service model that you see directly to the left of that is in all likelihood what your number could look like. Now, I state this because you've been, I guess, blowing out the TAF here far, far and away. But we still want to use that TAF number as our general design guide because we don't have the historic data to back that up. And so, we can't really battle the FAA on that just yet until we have more data. What is important to note here is that employments themselves don't provide us the, the, the data points to size an airport terminal. What does that is called peak hour and plane passengers. So, peak hour and plane passengers are exactly what it is. It's within a peak hour of your operating day, how many people would pass through your airport terminal. That number based on our design aircraft, which is a seven-three-seven-eight-hundred or two RJ-seven-hundreds, which is almost what you had today, you had two RJ-two-hundreds. That provides us with a peak hour and plane passenger design number of a hundred and six passengers. And I just wanted to state here, I was at the event last week. Having United operated by SkyWest within Watertown is just great. You can see with, the three-month employments have been up a hundred and fourteen percent from the same period last year. When I was speaking with people at the airport terminal today, almost everyone I spoke to was actually using Denver as a connection point. We always state that these, that these airports are actually connecting, you know, the city of Watertown to the world. Well, if you, if you don't have an inter-airline agreement, like we did not have here for many years, then you're stuck going to Denver and then rebooking a flight to get out somewhere else. Right now, you can connect through Denver and get to anywhere in the world. I will not spend too much time on this. Just note that we've highlighted that peak hour number of one hundred, which is our design guide number. These are, these are sort of general program requirements. And I guess I would note, just when you're flipping through the concept budget report yourself, that the existing, the existing facility, square footage numbers are in that first column to the left. This is, and again, note, some, some of those concessions, back house and vending are zero square foot in your current facility as well, car rental areas, TSA office areas. So, our total that we have, we've come up to right now, based on the floor plan that we developed has been right around twenty-four thousand square feet. What we also did then, and we were part of this, I presented to, to the council last year as well, there were four design alternatives for site locations for this terminal building. The first of which was to build in its current location. That posed a problem twofold. The building has just reached the end of its useful life. Roofing is, is leaking currently today even. Building systems are old and outdated. It doesn't provide the opportunity to actually build out when you need to expand every one of those rooms and maintain operations throughout construction, maintain air service throughout construction. So, that just seemed like it was not going to be the right, the right alternative. And we looked at alternative two, which is at the top of the page here. This seemed like a great idea to further separate general aviation and commercial service traffic, center the terminal building on the airfield. What it did not do however is utilize existing services, utilities, entry roads, things of that nature. And this, this option actually would have, in all likelihood, triggered an environmental assessment of that area based on its previous, previous uses. The third alternative was right in the center to the right, I guess. That is the current FBO or the General Aviation Terminal. That also seemed like a great location because it would push GA service down in this plan south and fully separate the, fully separate the commercial service traffic, utilize existing infrastructure as necessary. The problem is, is that we would have to relocate the FBO, which is not a reimbursable expense by the FAA. This, this solution would have been the most expensive for the city by about double. So, the fourth alternative we looked at was that center infield area that you see here, just right in the center of the page. What we'd look, look at doing is our preferred alternative is to utilize some of the existing infrastructure, taxi lanes that had just been constructed recently, utility service, entry drive and parking. We would be providing a new building, a new terminal building, so phasing would not be an issue. We would build the terminal building while you were operating out of the old terminal. It serves as kind of an intuitive focal point right at the end of the entry drive. So, right when you turn onto Airport Road, you would see this terminal building. It maximizes that separation again from GA and commercial service. The cons, as I've mentioned here, is that, you know, in the future, it, I feel like it should be something that the city and the state look to to try to separate that manufacturer's park traffic from passenger traffic. So, if there's some way where we can look at, and we have, we have looked at this, trying to create another curb cut or to try to force or focus the manufacturing traffic to. to create another curb cut or to try to force or focus the manufacturing traffic to enter in a different location. What this came to is our proposed floor plans then. So, utilizing that space program, we developed a concept that provided efficient flow, ample ability to be expanded in the future within the location as well. So, you can follow the arrows, and those are kind of general passenger traffic. That's how they would, they would come in right at the top of the page. The ticketing area is just to the lower right of that first arrow, and you would drop your bags there. There's also airport ticket officing and bag screening. Then you'd move to the checkpoint. That checkpoint is currently a single lane with the ability to be expanded to two lane. Designated post-secure restrooms, shared pre-secure and post-secure concessions, and then flexible space throughout. We want to, we want to be able to provide for charter traffic, which had been, had been canceled due to the, due to the size of the existing facilities. So, we'd like to be, be able to bring back charter traffic as well. We're looking at creating flexible space in the hold room to accommodate that charter traffic by creating sliding partitions that would either be pre-secure for concessions or restaurant use, or when closed, be, be a secure area and designated for use for, for hold room. Second level would be the location for the FAA, or sorry FAA. This would be Todd's office, basically the airport admin, conference rooms, ability to staff up, because I, in all likelihood, that is going to be something that potentially will happen with your increased air service. And then, so cubicle areas, reception areas, conference areas, and mechanical mezzanine. And section five, last section here is just implementation. What comes next? Funding and schedule. Funding right now, this, this facility is predominantly paid for, will be paid for by the federal government, the Airport Improvement Program, through the use of discretionary, which would be that supplemental appropriations or existing entitlement dollars that, that go to the airport annually. AIP, I wanted to be clear about, is also a user fee generated fund. So, if you buy a ticket, then a portion of that ticket goes into the AIP grant amount. And if you, if you don't travel by air, you're not paying into the Airport Improvement Program. The state has approved their maximum funding to the tune of about $200,000 specifically for the terminal building. They will also contribute to infrastructure work associated with the terminal. And then local sponsor share. And our goal is always to minimize local funding by increasing eligibility, the eligible amount of, of spaces that they are allowed, allowed to be funded by the federal government. The other side of that is the passenger facility charge, which the city of Watertown is now collecting by their user fees as well. So, this was a, this is the budget portion of the concept budget report. As you can see, general overall area, construction costs, eligible percentage, and then we get into FAA shares, state share, sponsor shares. We've broken this out into individual elements for the terminal building. The apron, taxi lanes, parking areas, and then fees and, and design fees and, and apron reimbursement, that was a previous job. So, all told, we requested from supplemental funding from the FAA, right around $14 million. The state share would be maximized at about $500,000. And then, if we were able to increase the eligible percentage, this number would, the, the sponsor share number would be about two and a half million dollars. We just wanted to ensure that that, that's kind of a best-case scenario. That's a maximization of, of the FAA dollars with trying to limit as much sponsor share as possible. Because this is in its concept phase, you know, we would anticipate that the, the city should hold roughly $4 million, which was the first number that I gave you last fall. Schedule. We will be providing the CBR for final FAA approval this week. We will be ready to, if possible, select, or accept fiscal year $19 if we are selected for supplemental. If we are not selected, the terminal project is scheduled for 2021. Oh, and then, of course, we would, our application rolls over. So, if we are not selected for supplemental this year, we would be, or we would be up for supplemental again next year, and so on, until we actually hit our capital improvement program or CIP scheduled, terminal design and construction in 2021. And that is all I have, so I, any questions, please? I know I was kind of pushing through it. Or Todd, anything that I missed?
I have a question about, could, Brandy, could you hit the lights? Thank you. We've hit our goal and got 100, or got a million dollars to use toward projects at the airport. Where does that money happen here? Is that accounted for in your estimate?
Mike, go ahead.
No, you're not.
How about now? There we go. Mike Schmidt, Helms &amp; Associates. Last year when we talked to you guys, when you hit 10,000 employments, that puts you at a primary status. The million dollars is, you used to have $150,000 of year, a year for your entitlement funds. What the million is, is now instead of 150,000, you have a million. So, as long as you maintain at least 10,000 employments, you will have a million dollars of entitlement dollars every year going forward, provided that the, the FAA doesn't change their, their rules and their, their appropriations. So, it's, it's not just a one-time thing. You'll get that every year, provided you maintain 10,000 employments.
So, can we apply that to our local share of 2.5 million to 4 million dollars?
It doesn't work as, as far as covering the local share. What it does is, it, it's part of that federal share. So, whether it's supplemental, most, any project out there with, with the FAA, whether it's discretionary entitlements, the first thing they're going to make you use is your entitlement dollars. So, for fiscal year 19, your project for apron, it'll be, a million off the top will be entitlements. The remainder would be covered with discretionary funds from the FAA. You are allowed to bankroll a couple of years of entitlements, so, but I believe with primary airports, I think you can only go two years, I believe. I'd have to get back to you on that one. Small GAs can typically roll four years' worth of entitlements. So, if they're getting $150,000 a year, they can bankroll $600,000 before they start losing them. You guys, just, there's so many needs out there and, and big needs, you just, you never see your entitlements get built up very far because there's so many things that have happened at your airport the last, you know, seven years or so.
So, would this bottom line, 2.5 to 4 million dollars be different if we hadn't hit 10,000 employments?
Not necessarily, but your, your ability to compete for discretionary funds for a terminal would certainly prohibit you from, from that if you didn't have 10,000 employments. I can't say that it would or wouldn't, but seeing your air service grow the way it has sure builds a good case along with the CBR. That's why they do the forecasting, and that's why this document's so important to get funding from the FAA for your terminal project. This is really the, the meat and potatoes of your justification for the project. So, as Mitch said, if, if we do not get selected, or if the city doesn't get selected for supplemental appropriations, they still need it for your future terminal project that's slated a few years down the road.
So, this terminal being built, do we pay our local share as it's built, or do we reimburse the feds, or do they reimburse us? How does that work?
You, you initially pay for the construction, you know, progress payments, whether it be in design or construction, and then you submit reimbursement requests, just like a typical AIP project. So, Kristin would send all the bills up through the state, since we're a grant-channeling state, it goes through the DOT, and then they reimburse what's eligible. Does that make sense?
I think so, so, but we, we don't have to come up with 17 million dollars.
No.
We would, each payment goes through that.
Yep, it goes through the process, and I don't know, what does it take, Kristin? Probably 30 days-ish?
A little bit.
A little bit more. So, once she sends all the paperwork up to the state, they process it through the federal system, and then, then the city would get a reimbursement check. So, you, you kind of initially upfront the costs, but then get reimbursed, you know, say 45 days later for those expenses that are eligible.
Okay.
And then, I guess, one thing I want to add is, is the number that we're talking about is, we kind of looked at this twofold. We wanted to make sure that our ask was for the FAA side that we're showing the most eligibility, so we have the most federal dollars, but also on your guys' end to make sure that if, if the eligibility doesn't come in as high as we would like, that you're covered. Because it's much easier to tell you that you're going to spend that now and come back, you know, a year from now and say, well, we didn't need as much, versus the other way around. Those are two totally different conversations.
Right. Councilman Beuhler?
Mike, a question for you. Is that going to affect the discretionary dollars if we have that million dollars that we currently have? Is that going to, I mean, are they going to say, okay, we're going to give you 16 million dollars? If we didn't have that, is it going to make a difference? Would they say, maybe we'll give you 17 million dollars?
Well, if, you know, you have an apron project coming up, so, like I said, the first thing they're going to make you use is your entitlement dollars. So, we get going through this apron project and, and start with that, and all of a sudden you get selected for appropriations. I'm not sure if they'll make you, depending on grant timing, I'm not sure if they'll make you utilize your 2020 entitlements or not. That's, I, I can't answer that honestly without, you know, all the stars have to align and we'll have to work with the FAA to see what they're going to do. But if this, if the city were to get awarded supplemental, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mitch, like say, December, you're in fiscal year 2020, because the federal government's fiscal year runs October 1 to September 30. Chances are, your, your fiscal year 2020 dollars or entitlements would be utilized within that. That would be my guess. I don't know if you, you'd agree with that.
It's a, there are two different avenues here too, and discretionary, normal discretionary would require you to always use your entitlements first, no matter what. Special supplemental applications has been varying in, to some degree. You know, certainly, we would try to allow you to use your entitlements on, on current CIP projects first, and then the, the request for the 14 million dollars from the FAA would be mostly discretionary then.
Mitch is correct. I mean, we would have to work with the FAA, obviously. That's what we would fight for, is to keep, for you guys to keep your entitlement dollars as much as you can. But at the end of the day, if they were going to come to the city and say they were going to fund the terminal building, however, your fiscal year 2020 entitlements are going to have to go towards it, I, I still think that's a really good deal.
And Jerry made a great point here too, that, you know, what would end up happening to your capital improvement program then, is that would all move up, so your entitlement dollars would sent, then still be utilized on the airport, on the airport.
Councilman Vilhar?
What's your guys' best guess as to the timetable of when the, when we'll find out on the supplemental FAA appropriation?
That's a, that's a great question.
I said best guess.
Yeah, right. I would say within the next six weeks, two months potentially. You know, what happens right now, we are in the time of season where grant applications are due for normal projects. And what the FAA wants to do is look at normal AIP grant projects, so that they have those kind of ready to go, and then they can also look at their supplemental projects as well, while they're doing, you know, this, this grant work. So, you know, grants typically need to be in the first week in July, right now, for normal AIP-funded jobs. Third week in July, they would likely be getting together the different airport district offices around the region, and then making selections on what is going to get funded. I would say, you know, in under two months, we would know. That, yeah, that is my best guess, and, and I have been wrong. I think I told Todd that, that we were two months out for six months straight probably. It's like, no, they're telling me, they're telling me two more months, so, but yeah.
Other questions?
Just one. The option four that you showed us earlier, are, we would not be in any, in any danger of an environmental impact study for that? Is that true?
When we met with the FAA in March at the South Dakota Airports Conference, I'm not saying we're not going to have to do maybe a documented cat X, maybe some subsidiary work, looking at different environmental things, but the Environmental Protection Specialist did not indicate that a full-blown environmental assessment was needed in that area.
Which would take how much time if we had to do that?
18 months to eight, you know, a year and a half to two years, probably.
That really ended up kind of disqualifying that alternative two there, the further, the furthest to the top. We would not be neglecting any environmental. It would just be a documented cat X. It would just be, it's previously disturbed.
All right. Other questions or comments? Don't see any, so thank you very much for the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Item number 11 is old business. Is there any old business?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I just want to point out for the record, at the last council meeting, the council approved a resolution of intent to enter into a lease with our potential car rental business at the airport. Because of some issues that they're running into, the less see, there, of course, as you noticed, there's a, there was not a lease on the agenda tonight to be approved. So, there'll be another resolution of intent coming forth, I believe, at the next meeting with subsequent action at the first meeting of August.
Thank you. Is there any new business? See none? Any liaison member reports? All right, there's no reason to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2 at this time, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Solum.
Motion by Beuhler, and, okay. Motion by Solum.
Yeah, sir.
Second by Danforth. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. And this was your last council meeting. I, I want to say, there will be plaques forthcoming, but at a later meeting, because we are shorthanded and didn't get that done. But we do genuinely appreciate your service, Councilman Danforth. It's been eight years on the council, and Councilman Thorson was four years on the council, and Councilman Solum, 12 years on the council. So, thank you for your service. Let's give him a hand. I'll invite you back at a later date. We'll take a short break, and then we'll come back for the-